Monday, June 3rd, 2024, Eastern City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand for prayer. Pastor Hunter, could you lead us in prayer?
What the hell?
Where'd he go? Oh, I see.
He's coming. And he says, if you must be, you should.
Let us bow. Eternal and all wise God, we bow before your presence once again with thankful and grateful hearts for this opportunity for us to convene together and be about the business of our city. We recognize that you have all power and sovereignty over both heaven and earth, but we're grateful for the measure of authority that you have given this body for us to rule and govern of this portion of your vineyard. So we ask, Lord, that you endow each member of this council and our mayor with the necessary wisdom to go forward and do those things that are necessary for the benefit of every citizen of this community. We beseech your blessings upon all of our law enforcement officials and all of those in positions of authority over the people of this community. We ask that you hold them in the hollow of your hand and keep them from harm and from danger. We also ask that you extend those same blessings of love, protection, and sustenance to every member of this city. We ask this prayer in Jesus' name. Let all of God's children say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, please keep standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Make sure it's proper.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considerable for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would... You got feeling? Roll call.
May Norman.
Present.
May Fortson Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Reddick is present. Councilor Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard has an excuse absence. Councilwoman Richardson.
Two, three, four. Here we have six presidents, and we do have a call on tonight.
Great. Everybody, let's look at the agenda. I think we forgot to put in the public hearing for the budget. I think the public hearing is tonight, then we take it up at the next meeting. The notice was sent out in telegram, so I think we need to add that on the public hearing. Anything else we need to add or delete from the agenda?
I did have one question.
Okay.
When we were making a discussion on the... Was it C?
Uh huh.
The amount?
It's nine thousand.
It's nine thousand.
Yep.
Correction. Okay.
Scratch out three and put nine.
Okay.
Good job.
Of course.
Any other changes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
A second.
We probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Presentation, Inkster Master Plan 2024 McKenna Project, scheduled dates presented by A.C. Williams.
Good evening, city council and residents. And so I just wanted to provide a quick update regarding our master plan. At last, we spoke, or the last time I was up here, I was providing a presentation on our progress in becoming a redevelopment-ready community. And master plan, the capital improvement plan, where some of those big-ticket items, I wanted to bring to your attention and say, hey, look out for these because we're working on them. So McKenna, who's taking the lead on doing the master plan, provided the planning commission an update at our last planning commission meeting, which was Tuesday, the 28th. And they gave us a project schedule. So I selected some slides from that presentation that just particularly focused on the timelines and the particular activities that they want us to consider. Some of those activities include community survey, a field day, community workshop, round table, and focus group discussions. And the engagement activities that they are recommending, or at least put in a timeline, include a public survey for June through July of 2024, a field day on Juneteenth, 2024, a public open house, July, 2024, round tables through July and August of 2024. Then we do a draft master plan review with planning commission in November, and then a review plan for the distribution in December, a public hearing in February with adoption in February, and of course, implementation. So some key things I wanted to bring up regarding these engagement activities is Juneteenth is very close. And some of the feedback that they gave us was essentially pick an activity that they want, that we want them to participate in, and they will show up. So that's something we need to think about because we want to put out notice and we want as much participation from the residents as possible. I don't know if that's something we want to think about tonight, but I wanted to put it on your radar. I did ask if they had marketing materials ready. They said yes. We just pretty much have to tell them where and what time. So that's something to consider. And then the RRC and Michigan in general recommends that we do at least one joint session between the major planning groups, city council, planning commission, and the ZBA. And if I could recommend one, that would be for the draft master plan review, potentially at the planning commission meeting in November, which I think is like the 24th of the 20th.
Okay.
So if we had to do at least one, at least that one, and then everyone can come to the planning commission meeting that night since McKenna will be going over the draft master plan with us at that time. And then, of course, we can all give our feedback and go from there. So some last notes include some strategic issues like redevelopment, looking at some priority sites, including Inkster High School, economic development, you know, commercial possibilities, corridors, food access security, housing, looking at our quality, our housing stock, and what some potential housing options could be, especially because we want to update our zoning, make sure that we have the types that we want, including the missing middle. And so those are some major activities involved with the master plan, and I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention because they're pretty much expecting us to get started now.
Let's pick some dates. So we have Juneteenth in June, and I think that's, we have the parade at the library.
On the 15th.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
So residents there, that might be a good spot. What else? Do we have any other activities we have in June? Just like... Or what's like...
Honey sing.
Peace rally. Yeah.
June 19th.
June 19th.
You got a picnic on the 15th, Mr. Mayor. Oh, we got a picnic in the park for your team on the 15th, too. But missed it in your 90s.
Okay. We got a lot of stuff going on in June.
Right.
We got Father's Day. We're gonna be at Colonial Park on Father's Day, celebrating fathers, fish fry and cigars.
Fish fry and... Sounds accessible.
Yeah. So you will be some...
How old is that?
Three to seven.
Three to seven.
Yep.
And it's not too early, not too late?
Yeah, it's on a holiday, so they may not want to work that day. But then the Juneteenth parade, we said, on Hamlin, and then we have the parade down Michigan Avenue. So we have three things that week, basically, in seven days. So they can pick which one or come to all of them there, some of them.
So what would you like to move forward? Would you like to put that in an email and we forward it to them so they can give it to us? And then we'll put what marketing materials that they have on line. But I'm hoping also social media, too, because it's a really quick turnaround.
It is. Okay, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
This is just that week.
Yeah.
And is anything else going on in June?
Yeah. Gosemity Missionary Baptist Church with the Westland Police Department, the Exeter Police Department having their community event on June 8th.
That's this Saturday.
Yeah, this Saturday.
June 8th.
And then Smith.
One on 18th.
Awesome.
I think it's week guest them.
Oh.
Yes, we just probably met in two, Israel, that's why I can't release Smith Chapel this was 12. And they're both 10.
So we got a lot of activities. Yep.
Do you want to be there?
Yep, that starts in two days.
We feel like there's one where we can get the most participation from.
The church events, the church events are gonna be big. Don't forget you got CFE picnic on the 23rd. Will be 500 people in the park.
It did specifically say Juneteenth Field Day, so these other events are happening in other parts of June, but we would need to also pick one for Juneteenth specifically.
We got, we have a couple to pick for Juneteenth. We're gonna put all the dates in there.
Okay. Perfect.
They can come to any of them.
And that's it. That's, I just wanted to put that on your radar because we're in the, I guess, official phase of getting the public feedback and participation on what our vision for our city is. And of course, we just want as much participation or people to come out as possible, so we need to get on getting the word out.
Okay, we'll definitely do it.
Questions for me?
Questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Ashley, I sent you the flyer for the one for Smith Chapel if you don't have it already.
It's tough.
Okay, next is public hearing. Do we have a motion to open up the public hearing on the proposed 2024-25 budget?
So moved.
Second.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, it is now open. Everybody get a chance, the proposed budget is on the website. Hopefully, people got a chance to look at it. If you have any comments on it, please feel free to come up now. Darren, do you want to give a general, you want to speak to the budget in general? Where is Darren?
I'm missing?
Oh, he is. Right there.
In the front.
Okay. Not really, okay. Does anybody have any comments on the proposed budget?
Let's tell him. Butts.
Okay.
I don't think we had a chance to look at it. Can you share some highlights about it?
I don't know if there's highlights.
Information that you said on the way of fight. I don't have it.
You all got it?
Touch bonds.
Uh, what was cut? I mean, we, we cut. So we cut, how many, what was it, 300? From the general fund, we cut about over $300,000 from what we spent last year to try to shore up our deficit, our assumed deficit that we're gonna have after this last audit. We cut where we could. We've applied for a lot of grant money and different things to try to fill those holes so we don't lose anything in service. We didn't really grow much. We didn't add new positions or anything because, of course, we're trying to cut because we have a financial, we have to deal with the deficit, proposed deficit. So that's pretty much what it is. Everything is basically as is, as it was last year, except for the cuts we made.
What else are the cuts that you made?
Well, in my eyes, say in my office, we had administrative assistant last year that made $85,000. My administrative assistant makes $24,000. In addition, we had another employee in that office who was making, that was, she was funded through the senior alliance, but she was probably making about $20 an hour. We don't have that person anymore. We got rid of a contractor. We spent $174,000 with McKenna last year to do our planning services. We turned those duties over to Sarday Crutchfield, who's a planner, and Derek Dowdell, who's our community development person. So they're doing the planning for the city now so we can save that $174,000.
Any else, any other cuts?
We eliminated one position in the police department. We don't have an assistant chief. Chief Jacobs does everything. She works nine days a week, 26 hours a day. That's how we rolling right now. So there's a smile. Everybody's doing a lot more with less. So that's what's happening.
Yeah, it sound like you guys did what you had to do and as a resident, now you're changing.
Thank you.
I thought needing services as we hit the fight thing, when fights go out, you know, the spaces, stuff like that, you know, to me just appreciate your two dollars, just and we have these for the, and try to support that, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Womack?
Was it us?
Don't touch your face, Mr. King, by it. I'll put it in. Was it?
Come on, come on, come on.
She's on notice to say some other property in there.
Come on, stop it here.
Was that, that's the notice on the door, and it says a property tax administration that you...
Most back out.
That was this meeting, July 3rd, I mean, January 3rd. To be left, not the, not the safety. Since property tax, for to let her bar.
Okay.
That's the noise on the door.
Okay. I can read that little bit right. Did, did we do a millage increase, or did we even do a millage?
We're proposing a public safety millage. I just looked at a notice that said property tax millage.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but we're doing, we're proposing a public safety millage. Think the police chief and the fire chief presented it at last meeting? What? But that's not up tonight. No, that's not up tonight.
That's not, I was really talking about the property tax.
I'm not sure what, I just read what you're talking about. I don't know what that is.
Oh, okay. If you don't know, it ain't... I would like to know about the...
Somebody for the door?
The situations that weren't turned into the state, and they withheld a lot of our money, have those been resolved yet?
Not exactly. The audit every year is due for the prior fiscal year is due December 31st. The fiscal year ends June 30th. So you have basically six months to get your audit into the state. We're working on that audit from last year currently, right now. We have to get it in by the first week of July, or we miss out. I don't even want to tell you how much money we miss out on. It's big numbers, so we have to get it done. The state revenue sharing has been withheld from us thus far because we don't have the audit done. So once we get it done, then they will send us that money. So we have to stay afloat without receiving our state revenue share. And we've had to do some things to make it to June 30th, essentially, and pray that we have the audit done so we can move forward with the new fiscal year. So it has not resolved yet, but it is getting resolved.
Okay, and one other thing that makes me click to know is that we haven't really had a balanced budget in the last few years because we've been under a deficit elimination plan. And as long as you're under a deficit elimination plan, you don't ask for balance budget.
True.
So they need to understand that things you're doing are things that should have been done two or three years ago.
Sure.
We want to thank Darren caring to put me back to when I could get coffee. Yeah.
So that's true. The state requires you to pass a balanced budget. If you're in a deficit and you have a plan on file of the state, they'll, they'll let you deviate from that slightly. But obviously, the goal is not being deficit. So we are, we're very close to a balanced budget, but the expenses of everything goes up every, every year, and the revenue does not follow as fast. When your property values go up, it takes two or three years for the taxes to catch up with it. You all got a notice this year that your property taxes went up. Yeah, I'm sure, most of us did. Because our property values have shot up. We're back to 2007, 2006 property values in the city of Inkster, which is a good thing, but it means we have to pay more taxes. But it takes a couple of years for that taxes to catch up with what we're spending. So you're always gonna be juggling or trying to increase the revenue so you will be stable. And that's one of the reasons why I brought out for a public safety millage. Instead of doing this dance every year, we want to stabilize what we have to have, which is police and fire, and of course, DPS also. But this is a public safety millage, police and fire. We know we, if we get that passed, we know we'll be solid and we won't have to reduce the numbers in those departments, which we frankly cannot afford to reduce anyway. So that's why we're asking for, I know people don't like to pay taxes, nor do I pay any more taxes, but we have to make sure we're safe and we're taking care of our residents. So that's why we're proposing. You have other comments? Yes.
Can you?
Come on, come on up.
Yeah, go up.
Come up saying that's a public hearing, we gotta keep trying.
That didn't tweet that.
That's hurting me.
Well, I guess this is a question for Mr. Bivins. Can you, just because some people might not have been at the council meeting in the past, and I was explaining to a whole lot of people why I'm out in the community, they want to know why their neighbor's sidewalk is getting repaired and theirs not. And I told them that, you know, it was announced at council meeting a while ago, and this, they had to be fixed. It was voted by council for doing the fixes. So maybe you can explain it one more time on Zoom so people can understand, because I'm doing a lot of passing out information for you guys. I'm had to go on payroll.
You want touches? I mean, you can explain the program. It's obviously in some phases.
Damn. So, good evening, mayor, council, viewing audience and all that is here. We have a sidewalk program in the city of Inkster that's probably gonna take 20 years to get done because I have to do every sidewalk in the city of Inkster. Some places, like, I'll give you an example, Trow Bridge, there's no sidewalk in front of City Hall. There will be a sidewalk put in, but it's done in phases and sections that we have studied the whole city sidewalks, and we determined where the worst area is. We started at the worst, and we progressively coming forward to get to each section. We just asked people that they have to be patient. You have to be patient because these things take time. You know, I'm working with limited funds, you know, we try to apply for, like the mayor said, we apply for grants and stuff. We got money last year, we got money coming up in '25 for sidewalk, but we have to keep applying and getting money because we are trying to avoid putting on our tax bills so the residents have to pay. So we're trying to generate money so the city could cover it. So that's where we are.
It's more, probably say, turn it off.
Yeah, but think about to do the whole city here.
Unless we get an influx of money.
Money, yeah. No, I said 20. You're looking at roughly between 15 to 20 million dollars to do all the sidewalks in this city.
Any other comments, questions? Come on up.
That's a team. Actually, trench.
Good, good evening, everyone. You have a question for you, but I'm, you, Alan, Mr....
I've been... Mr. Bivins.
I start speaking in my...
Yes, Mr. Bivins.
Oh, sorry, I forgot your name.
Lindsey.
Time has happened.
I was, she was asking about the sidewalks, I'm asking about the tree again. When should we expect that as well? The residents who need the trees cut down, because remember, I think I told you when our lady with this in us?
So, yeah.
Talked to you all about that as well from them. So I just wanted to know if...
So, once again, it's a citywide program. Right, so we are addressing those as fast as we can. We have more trees than, oh, in this city. This city is full of tree. So we address them as we, fast as we can, like we took down the trees on Judah Street. We trimmed Judah Street. So we're trying to strategically attack the city with the trees. I know your situation, I will follow up with you.
I appreciate that.
I will follow up with you after the meeting because I thought it was handled, but I'll make sure it get handled.
I just want to make sure I don't have to wait 20 years.
No, 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 no. The tree, so just to let you know, trees are gonna be here forever, so this is forever program. This is not gonna be a child.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments, questions?
About 20.
Both of them. Hey, trees cost money. Cutting down trees costs money. Costs money. Anybody else?
So to correct these.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
They probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Consider agenda. We have a motion?
So moved. Second.
They probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Y'all so soft spoken tonight.
We're still putting cars pretty good.
Say that with your chest, come on.
All right.
Boards and commissions.
We have a mission to appoint Gina Allen to the Downtown Development Authority.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second. I'm old.
Okay.
Okay, just we probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
We have a motion.
Out of order.
We have a motion on the floor to appoint Sonya Jennings to the Downtown Development Authority.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Okay, we probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Mr. Mayor, to, to recognize, you said reappoint?
Yeah, it's reappoint.
Reappoint.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to appoint Randa Davis to the Downtown Development Authority.
Reappoint.
Thank you. So moved.
So they probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Turn it up.
All right. No ordinance today on the new business. You gotta read them? Okay.
Consider approval for Easter Vikings All Class Picnic. Location is 3250 Middle Belt, Inkster, Michigan. Former Inkster High School grounds. Event dates are 7/26/24 through 7/28/24. Day one is from 6:00 to 10:00. Day two is from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and day three is from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. If they're on.
We need a specific motion on what's included in this approval from whoever decides to make the motion. Yeah, they say 82300 is total.
$2,300.
Yeah.
Move for approval of $2,300.
So probably moved, we have a second?
Go.
Second, all right. The motion is to approve the event and, and add or donate $2,300 with the services for the event. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, pass.
The next item is consider adopting a resolution on behalf of the city of Inkster for the Greenway Trail Phase 3 TAF Grant Funding Request.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second, we probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Item C is consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels. The parcel is located on the east side of Ass Street between Chestnut and Beach. The parcel is duly noted in the amount of $9,000.
Move for approval. Second.
We probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Item D is consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the south side of 26925 Notre Dame between Sylvia and Princess Ave in the amount of $1,500.
So moved.
Second.
We probably move to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. It passes.
Consider approval of a special land use for a proposed hookah lounge in the B3 general business district at 29709 Michigan Ave.
So move, support.
We probably moved and supported discussion.
Yeah, Drew, oh, sorry.
No, we have it.
Okay, just because in orientation, we brought this up. And just wanted to reiterate it here that we will be revisiting the smoky lounge or hookah lounge ordinance to enact one, uh, fully so that we have regulations.
Yes.
Because we want it to.
Yes, I did have a question. Um, and there is, um, concern about the ventilation. And I know you threw me under the bus, Sandy and my friend, they already, they did support some program. Not that I went there and worked. Had to clear that out. But, um, if they could just address, um, the ventilation portion of it. Because we're talking about.
Tap could apply this. You want them to dress, not you just want to make sure they have adequate ventilation?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, great. You heard that, Mr. Markowitz? You? No, 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 she just wants to make sure it's, uh, you, you have air scrubbers or whatever you need to.
Yeah, then.
Can you come to the mic for a second?
You know, they too. It's a, nothing, thank you, recovering.
First of all, thank you for considering adding this to my business, I appreciate it. Uh, can you hear me now? Okay. We have charcoal air scrubbers in that area to handle the extra for the hookahs. There'll be no cigars or cigarettes exclusively for hookahs only. And that has been provided in that area, which is a glassing area, which is separate from the alcohol area from the flight club.
Okay.
Nigga separate.
So, and it's, I think you said it was located on.
The second level.
Second level.
I stand.
So there is not going to be, um, like on the roof, is it going to be ventilation where they?
Outside. Being ventilated outside and also through charcoal filters that are also been installed.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Markowitz? All right, well, thank you, appreciate you coming.
Oh, he had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have you gone through, uh, state of Michigan and checked the regulations as far as having a hookah lounge there? Considering that it does, you do serve food there?
Uh, yes, what was happening is through the planning, our tobacco lawyer was here, uh, in the past, I think, presented everything. And it has to be, that area has been approved. Because it's a separate section, separate entrance, completely separate from the food.
So there is separate entrance?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Which is exited through the rear, separate to just the scan.
Okay.
He's a good question.
Yeah, great question. Any other questions up here? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Yes.
Thank you, they passes, thank you.
Item F is consider approval of Jones and McDowell family reunion on July 10th at Whitty Park. Attendance is approximately 150 people from 8 a.m. to 10 o'clock p.m.
So move.
Seconds.
And probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. It passes.
The next item is consider approval of a Juneteenth peaceful march on June 19th from 12 to 1:30 p.m. On East Michigan Avenue to John Daly to Ince Park for approximately 150 people.
Wow.
Could make a, are they here?
Oh, come on up.
Well, come on up. We, we might have a question. Let's make a motion so we can open up for discussion.
So move for discussion.
Second, second, okay, discussion's open.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for? We were discussing an orientation that since we're only 13 days, 16 days away? 16 days away. We may not have time to shut the road down because Michigan Avenue is an M dot or state of Michigan street. And usually we do these like at least 60 days in advance. So if we cannot get the road shut down, would it be okay for you guys to march on the sidewalk down Michigan Avenue and make a left on John Daly?
Going to touch on that.
Okay, we just want to make sure that was okay.
Oh, I didn't know y'all was trying to, about we shouldn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we come.
Was that? So I didn't know that y'all was trying to get the road shut down.
Yes.
Oh, because I do the walk every year on the sidewalk.
We do years. We used to walk from there.
Do you have any questions?
Based on, by posing it, because it's an application. I'm running my commercial present.
I have one, uh, comment actually. So that means, um, we cannot include, um, to motorcycles and.
No, you can't do the mo, not on the sidewalk.
I understand, listen, what if, what about, what about, what about sharks? What about reaching, ready to stop John Daly to the park? We can't do it, we can't go for sure.
John Daly is our street. So that we can control more than we get Michigan Avenue.
Okay. Can't be repeated, get up in stocks here. So the opportunity, um, is dead.
Oh, it'd be a lot easier for us.
You, you say you watch a star year?
Yes, Sandy, how it's gonna be just that.
All your problem, you got to cross Michigan Avenue.
Because they just stood up. Did I shut down Michigan Avenue?
Yeah.
It'd be like, if it's 150 people.
Right.
You would have to stop Michigan Avenue for us to walk across.
I would have to send.
That would be, it would be both sides.
Dollars. Both sides. Start at the Dollar Tree and go to the park. If you start.
What's what?
If you start, if you start at the Dollar Tree, that's a local road. So they could approve that. But that's an outbound drink. If you go down from the Dollar Tree parking lot down to, to the park, you fine.
They didn't get, was so what about the full sit down that?
That's our street, that's our street too.
How and so.
Like, the, the only issue we have is you got, you gotta get the vet package cards for you to get approval for those people in that neighborhood.
But sorry.
You would have to get approval for the people that live in that neighborhood.
Who's the house person? We'll track them, use our house.
Cosmo rich, Cosmo riches.
Yeah.
I think we have sent a notice out too.
We had to send it, they had to send, they had to get some petition sign, petition.
It's not that many signatures, was it 50 or?
I thought it's the rest of this.
It's a certain number though, it's a certain number.
Amount of people that are, uh, per state, they get a badge to her, the majority.
So you got, they're saying basically, if you want to walk through a residential neighborhood, we have to get signatures from some of the residents. And she says based on the percentage, so if there's 100 residents there, you may have to get 30 signatures, you know?
But it.
Are you willing to do that?
Does it add on with that kind of person? And sure.
Okay.
Two is, more is there like an alternative solution that you guys can propose to kind of help the, like, move this along a little bit? Because I, we've all knocked doors and we only have 16 days out and so.
I mean, wherever you walk, okay, you go into a renovation then.
Okay, so.
John Daly is probably the, if you went from the Dollar Tree to the park, it's very short distance.
Distance, right, yes.
So it's not much of a parade or a walk, but you, you don't have a lot of houses you'd have to deal with because it's John Daly, most of them on the side streets. But it's up to you, I mean, we, you know, it's.
We walk, if they walk from Michigan Avenue to Ince Park. So you saying that they have to get permission from the houses or the site? Or if they don't draw a bridge coming down South River, um, Drive? And they have to give permission for the residences? Like when I had a black party, I had to get signatures, I had to knock on all my neighbors' doors in the city, I throw down. So then what they have to do?
Same thing.
So we're still talking about Michigan Avenue?
Yeah, we don't want to cross Michigan Avenue with a whole bunch of people. And that could be a problem.
Are they finishing at Ince Park?
Yeah, I think you want to finish in Ince Park.
They need to, it's out to parks.
You need to enter.
Well, you tell me. Visiting their park.
If they finish in the park, you said they need to.
I mean, I guess they could walk to the park, if they need the pavilion and all that.
You know what, I, can I just suggest one thing? Because this is our first year trying to get this together, you know, I'm just willing to do the sidewalk, you should start. Then next year we can start earlier and maybe we can, you know, give Michigan Avenue. We have enough.
So you would, you was, so you would start your walk at John Daly?
I keep talking, I'm going to.
No, let me ask you this question. You would start your walk at John Daly in Michigan on the sidewalk to where Ince Road? And turn down Ince Road to South River?
No, that's not what they're saying. But how if we do this? Because we'd be here all night. Why don't we make a motion with the details of, of the, the, uh, route to be worked out with the administration?
Okay.
You know?
This house.
So we're not on the spot.
And, and Mr. Mayor, can I just say that normally when these special, then, um, applications are completed, they're completed, the clerk forwards them on, and then they meet with staff so they could come to these types of resolutions or.
Sure. Okay, so motion was to, for discussion, you want to amend it, to approve it with the details to be coming later?
Yes.
I could say on the bar, right?
Well, they'll figure it out.
He's gonna make a, I make a motion, I'm sorry, I amend my motion to include the details to be worked out with the administration.
Prior to. Okay, do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Who's going to be the point person for the administration? Who's the walk?
Your own business, there we go.
So make sure you guys, let's talk this.
I would do it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. It passes, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, bye.
Publicity, please, yeah.
Under that.
I don't know.
He died.
All right. Pamela Spears Bradford.
I'm singing in the today, I'm not finished on it.
Good evening, everyone, with the city council and the city of Ince.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here to complain. I'm very upset and very angry at this point. I attempted to purchase a home over on Greenwood.
Is she talking to the mic?
I've got, I've, I attempted to purchase a home over on Greenwood from a house flipper. And to my surprise, we got to the point to where we're going to close. And F, and naturally had the FHA inspection done. It turns out there was a lot of electrical, uh, things that were applied in there such as the ground fault, outlets and stuff. They weren't, weren't wired properly. And it turned out there was a CFO issued to this house. And it looked like it was never really inspected by the city. I'm, I'm not saying bringing this up to try to push this seller to fix this stuff so that I could go ahead and purchase the house. My biggest concern is how safe are other houses that are being flipped from out of town, how, out of town flippers that are unsafe, that been signed off and saying it's safe? And they're going ahead and selling these houses to residents and possible residents. I did find out since coming here that that particular inspector is no longer with us, which is good. And I'm happy to hear about that. But still, I, I don't know if you got any idea in place to go back and check behind this guy? To see if these houses are still, is still, have become safe and to help these people get their house safe? Because it also puts in my mind that poor little girl that got burnt up, that got burnt, 60% of her body was burnt back, uh, February 14th. I'm at the point of where I'm on the fence of even staying in Ince because of this. Um, like you said, I'm just really very angry about it. Ince used to have, used to follow those codes for electrical and plumbing. While my father was a contractor, very tough and very hard. And it's got, became just plain or lackluster. We need to be, do better, we need to protect each other. And we need to protect ourselves from these out of town people grabbing up houses and doing any old thing they want and selling them.
Unfortunately, it was, this was our mistake. The inspector who allegedly inspected the house, inspected a different house, got the addresses confused. So that's why that situation, so it was a certificate of Oxford, it should have been issued to a different address. It was issued to that address. So he actually did not inspect that house. So that's why it was in the condition it was in. I'm, I'm thanking you for bringing that to our attention. So we had to do an investigation to find out what happened. And he inspected the wrong house, essentially.
Okay.
That's it.
They still.
So it still needs to be inspected, if it hasn't been since.
Yeah, so it still needs to be inspected, is it in, is it, so it's still, it's on the agenda to, on the, where it will be inspected?
Sure.
It should.
Sure, we'll, we'll send an inspector out then, we have to, because we inspected the wrong house.
Wow. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going, oh my God, wow, are you kidding me? Okay, all right, I was told to leave it alone, but I was just, I'm just so livid and so.
No, you shouldn't leave it alone, no, we should address it anytime we have a problem.
Yeah, I'm so livid and so angry the way that, as we put it, I'm pissed to the height of piss dibbity, oh.
That's great.
No, so.
You are, thank you.
Glad that you, I'm trying to do some.
We'll follow up with it, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Walter Cooper.
You.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel to the residents of Ince. I just wanted to remind everybody this Saturday, Saturday, June the 8th, we will be partnering with, um, Westland PD. That's Ince PD and Westland PD. We'll be partnering with, uh, Yosemite Baptist Church on Eaton Road. Uh, we just want everybody to come out, it's from 11 to 3. This event is very important, it's going to show the partnership that the police department, um, all over, that we, we are coming together, doing events for our, each, each other's city, helping each other out, so I just think everyone should be there. We'll be giving away free food, uh, we're raffling off two bikes, um, as well as games, um, bounce houses, game trucks, uh, the whole ordeal. So that event is running from 11 to 3 this Saturday at Yosemite Church. Um, as well as all of our June events are sitting over there on the table, you can pick up a flyer to see all the amazing events that Ince Police Department is throwing the month, for the month of June.
All right, thank you.
You need kiss.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold a comment. I'm assuming this incredible signature is the salad, Scott?
I think we're two of you, Mrs.
You can read that.
But it's like little.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Been a long time. Um, I understand that you, um, the mayor selects and governs the Ince Housing Commission Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners elect and govern the executive director for Ince Housing Commission. I am here for a resolution for you to address the Ince Housing Commission Board of Commissioners with the order of action to acknowledge and address all my past and current housing challenges and complaints moving forward. I'm going to title this 100 Ways to Die in Public Housing. Because each day is critical to my household health as well as our lives. I have reached out to the Ince Housing Commission Executive Directors, um, and I say that with the S, on more than one occasion. Um, it's been a revolving seat with that position over the years. To follow up on my past and present requests for a hearing. I'm also checking the status of when a HUD certified licensed contractor, a specter would be out in person to inspect my entire home. Um, as you know or not may, may know, uh, I also, uh, CC, uh, you to the email. My household was exposed to a deadly toxic gases due to a broken valve on my, on my furnace. Uh, on a water tank linked to my furnace. I was told by a maintenance staff member that my home also showed signs of black mold. I also was told that the Parkside Estates was operating on an old power grid. Which, um, in my belief, um, causes my wall plugins to spark and light bugs to keep shorting and blow out. And it also broke my dryer. And I also was told that I can't wash at the same time as my neighbor. So I have to listen on the walls to make sure she's not running her appliances before I run mine. Um, oh, wow. I was told, um, that all my cases were still under investigation. Um, I was just wondering what, what is the, the Ince Housing Commission investigation policy? Is it 30 days, 90 days, 60 days? How long does the investigation take before I get a hearing? And will I still be granted a hearing seeing that you only can get 10 days from the initial complaint date to request for one? I'm requesting the same agent, um, that I had, uh, the, the same agent, hearing officer from Port Huron that I was granted two and a half years ago. But due to, um, her having her baby early and Ms. Tamika Sutton resigning from, um, Ince Housing Commission and put it on the back burner. And, um, I haven't heard any rescheduling, um, effort since. I'm requesting for a, a copy of my previous radon test as well as my current radon test so I could compare the two. I'm, I'm requesting for my home to be tested for black mold, um, and I want the results. I'm requesting for my home, um, electrical wires, boxes, wall sockets and stations to be checked for shortages, sparks, faulty, wear and tear damages. Um, I'm also requesting for my water pipes, I understand that's a different, uh, uh, department. Uh, water pipes to be tested for any mold, rusting, possible buildup of deteriorating of pipes, components and compound residue. Seeing that my household had ongoing life-threatening issues and situations with prolonged excessive unsafe deplorable and toxic living conditions and environments. Um, and has consistently, um, been ignored and, and targeted and denied for fair, equal, decent, safe, affordable housing. Lastly, I'm, I'm asking, um, to be immediately moved and granted an emergency section A voucher. Um, I would like the same consideration that the Ince Housing Commission Board of Commissioners gave, um, Canterbury um, during that, uh, that black mold crisis when they had moved off the whole block. And they offered them emergency section A vouchers, they relocated them to other housing commissions and they got a stipend check. I'm not asking for all that, just give me my section A voucher and, uh, let me go. Um, and then closing, thank you, um, for your time, efforts and consideration.
All right, thank you. We're gonna, um, I'm going to talk to building department tomorrow, we're trying to get one of our inspectors over to your apartment, Mr. Reddick, take a look at it. And then based on what they find, then we will contact housing and deal with them. Okay, thank you. James Everhart Jr.
Cool. Oh, I can do it. I believe, done.
All right. Peace, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right.
Um, I appreciate counsel, uh, in the community, the residents as well for being here today. Um, my public comment, Jerome Bevins, uh, spoke briefly on it. Um, I stay at 485 Sunday Dale Drive.[1767.41] I've been having an issue with a dead tree in front of my residence for quite some time, over roughly about two years, I reported to my council member. Still haven't had any action with it, but I know it is a process with that. That's a cause and effect to our plumbing as well. And the tree roots is growing inside, into our front yard. So that is a big issue in the city, as well as our infrastructure is really dilapidated. But I wanted to speak as well with the upcoming event for the state of Michigan, but also that actually will bring some funding to the city of Inkster. A lot of people know me from my community work in the city of Detroit. I'm no longer working in nonprofit in the city of Detroit, and I have been back home in the city of Inkster organizing around the community violence that has been happening with inside of the state of Michigan. I will be going up to Lansing, June 13th, from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM with a coalition of organization. I led an advocacy day last year that created a House Bill 46, well, we didn't create it, we amended House Bill 4605 and 4606 that came from the city of Detroit, out of, out of Duggan's administration, with a couple of state reps. And so we are going up to Lansing to advocate for more funding for community violence intervention. Community violence intervention, if you're not aware of what that is, it's a terminology that's been going around called CBI. It's actually investing into neighborhood approach solutions to gun violence inside of the community. So a lot of this money that's being utilized goes into a new form and lends a solution to gun violence. And if you don't know or haven't seen on the news, Detroit has implemented this strategy last year underneath the Duggan administration led by Deputy Mayor Todd Bedesen. And they have reduced gun violence by 60%. Gun violence, homicides, I mean homicides has been the lowest since the 1960s with this strategy. And so I'm just putting a call out for my residents. We come to city council, we ask them for all these different things. But advocacy doesn't just start right here, it actually goes to the house. So I'm calling out my residents to go to the state Capitol with myself. We have a link, if you need transportation, we're providing transportation. We have roughly about 15 spots left. If we grow, we're, we're gonna probably expand it as well. But we need to go to the state Capitol and, and demand our senators and our state reps to hold accountability, not just our city council and our mayor to hold them accountable. We need to hold them accountable. It is a lot of funding that is gonna go out to rural communities, particularly white communities that don't have the issues that we have. And it's a lot of money that's appropriated for our community, and it may not come down to our pipeline if we don't stand up. So if anyone is interested in advocating for advocacy day, this is the second year. We'll be going to Lansing, June 13th for CBI. And it's a lot of people, I hear the peace walk that's happening in gun violence is an advocate of this as well. They sit on the committees of this bill as well, so. I just wanted to bring that to our community attention.
Thank you. She had a question.
Please, I have a question. Where are you living from?
Say that again.
Where are you living from?
Okay, so we will, actually, the bus will be departing from Detroit at Forest Detroit's headquarters on Rosa Parks, I can give you the actual address. But if you go on my website, my, my nonprofit is called Motivating Inner New Dreams. And once you, once you go on the website, it's a pop-up, it'll click up with the flyer, and it's a registration link. For those, let me, let me back up. For those who need transportation there, we will leave the night before, because we'll be there at 8:00 AM. There will be hotel rooms accommodated with the transportation. The transportation bus will leave June 12th, if you need transportation. It'll leave the night of June 12th. The hotel will be paid for, the only thing that you will have to pay for is the deposit for your incidentals. So $100 deposit, credit card, the room will be in your name, and that will be, transportation will be provided. If you don't need transportation, you can just meet us in Lansing at 8:00 AM. All the details will be sent out through your registration. But please register so we can have an accurate head count, because this is a statewide initiative.
Thank you, I is here. Good way down, Stephen. How are you the blessed, Stephen, good for some.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And, and Mr. Everhart, could you please make sure you talk to Ms. Williams? Because I remember you want to be part of the master plan process. We talked about it, it was months ago. Maybe that city, might have been a state of city.
Yeah, well, state of city.
I want to make sure you're part of that process. Okay.
Neat.
Good day. Honorable Mayor and Counsel.
Good to see you again.
I spoke with Mr. Bevins on the one issue while you guys were in conference.
Okay.
One other item I wanted to bring to your attention, that's the speed bumps that they put in. And been told that, you know, it comes from Lansing and that. But I just wanted to say that to have a sign right where the speed bump is, to me, ludicrous. Inasmuch as that, when I hit that speed bump, I don't need a sign to tell me that I've hit it. It's already giving me the warning.
That makes sense.
And it's tearing up our cars, it's tearing up the budget. You think about the amount of money you're spending in material for those signs and the labor to put them in, and the speed bumps themselves. They're tearing them up, you gotta replace them, repair them. If you got the sign right there, you're gonna hit that bump, it's gonna tear that bump up faster than it would. I travel around the country, and that bridges, you see the sign says "Bridge Freeze", but they don't put it right where that bridge freezes.
That makes sense.
That sign needs to be, I can't say how many feet, I'm not an engineer in that regard, but at least 15, 20 feet, 10 to 20 feet away from that, that bump, you're gonna save on material and labor and repairing those stops. And many times they say, well, this is the way that it's always been done. I travel around the country, I see it in those places too. So I think Inkster should be a lead in that regard, and in many others too. But to say the best-in-class practice, just to me, common sense. It's gonna save my pocketbook, because it's tearing up my cars, my neighbors' cars, and just a few minor adjustments to me seem like it would solve a lot of problems and save money.
Are you in favor of the speed bumps, Mr. Raine?
Oh, most definitely have the speed bumps there.
The signs need to be placed somewhere else.
Right, give me a warning before I hit it. Don't do me no good after that, it's a bump warranty, you know?
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
Alright, thank you, appreciate you.
Good evening, Mayor Nolan. Counsel and community. I'm just up to remind you, the Westland A. Bennett Foundation is kicking off the Juneteenth celebration here in Inkster. And I know there are other activities, but stop being pleased for the parade. That's gonna be at noon, we plan to be sharp, just like the Memorial Day Parade. Won't be as large this year, but we're working at it. But just wanted to bring up, our event is for children and families, but we have selected as our grand marshals two senior residents of Inkster, Mr. Obie Thomas and Mrs. Sarah Young. They're gonna be our Mr. Juneteenth and Mrs. Juneteenth. They are both about 97 years old, so we're praying they'll be able to make it. But that's what we want to do, and we want the community to know about it. Please come out, that's at noon, June 15th. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a headphone plug that is on.
There you go. Tawana Fredenberg.
Then you turn on. Yes, with any base tier, why wait for it?
Oh, is she that old?
I'm fixed, it's cheap, miss. What I eat and keep working.
Good evening, councilmen and women and residents. I just wanted to see, is there anything that you can do regarding the rodent and snake issues that we have in our community?
What?
There was a snake in my basement. And I'm a single woman, and I didn't want to get it. So I had to get somebody else to get it, but we have like, I have a house next to me, it's vacant, and sometimes the grass is not cut. Houses on my neighborhood, you know, on my street, and it's just, I'm not sure.
What's the address for the vacant house, do you know?
So mine is 26195 Norfolk Street.
Got that, 26195. That, that, 26195 Norfolk.
Wasn't a garden snake either.
Wasn't a garden snake?
It was not.
It was something like a house of my pet.
And I haven't been sleeping, because of that issue. But.
Yeah, it's not dead. So you think it's coming from the vacant house, the grass, and?
It could, so I was told that when I bought my house, they tore it down, but it was a snake in that house. And I asked if it'd come back, and they said no. I don't know if it's the same snake or not, but they rebuilt my house. So it's like practically brand new, but the house next to me, they have another home. They don't live there, and it is falling apart. And there's lots of openings in the foundation. So it possibly, yes, and I'm not trying to, but I did, you know, I went downstairs one day and my drain was, the cap was off. And there's no way that cap can be knocked off, you have to, it has to be placed. So it could have came from the drain as well. I'm not sure, I just know it wasn't a baby snake, it wasn't a garden snake, and I don't like any of them, so I'm not sure. We have lots of children in our community, but it's like almost every other home, maybe on my side, is three houses, and then is a vacant home, three homes, and then vacant. And then a little further down, there's a home, the grass is up to here. I wouldn't cross, I wouldn't walk over there at all, because I know there's something in there. But just what can we do to make it better?
What can we do about snakes? That's a need, that's so.
Been a long, so what I skin me? I don't know, because they're special things, something. It's supposed to be grass, but.
I mean, we certainly get the grass cut and get that cleaned up, the vacant houses and the vacant lots.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. We have, you got her number on? Could you write your phone number?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Let's think about that one.
The halter?
Well, I don't have, there's several, Ali, Maki. We've been over there, and like on the lot of road construction over there too. There. Let's know about road, probably in this place.
I appreciate you guys for your time.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to pose something for downtown. I have that property right in front of the fire station. I thought maybe if Inkster would appreciate having their first garden center. And we're, me and my brother run one in Dearborn. The next closest one is the Dearborn one, Fairlane Gardens, and then you've got one on Middle Belt. So figured, how would I go about, you know, getting some help with the licensing or acquiring the property next door?
Okay, let me make sure I understand, because I went to public school. You, you, you are. You own land in front of the fire department?
Yeah.
From Frost Street.
In the house?
Yes, true.
Oh. It was the inside, autos, next to autos.
Yeah, we started re. That's, that's the one.
It's got an older house?
Yeah, we started to rebuild it, but we're, I don't know what to do with it yet.
So that's you. Yeah.
What, what you say about a garden center?
Yeah.
What, what it, you mean a garden or?
Garden center, like we still have flowers, trees.
It's big. Had a lot, like right next to your property.
See, the neighbors actually just bought it, and they want to park trucks and dump trucks there, so.
That's, yeah, that's. And B3?
It could be for the song, probably.
Oh, you know, Gabberts?
Gabberts is actually partnering with the collision center, and they're gonna park their dump trucks there.
Oh, shit, and you want to do a garden center on where your house is?
Yeah, plan was to take that whole land and make it into a garden center, but.
But still working.
Shaday, give him a car. I mean, you basically go through the planning process to figure out what you can and cannot do there.
Yeah.
And it'll eventually come to the planning commission. If it's a special land use or something, it's not already authorized to be done in that zone.
Yeah, I know, it's a downtown area.
Yeah, it is TCD, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure is, sure. So it's limited even more what you can do in the TCD. But if you talk to Shaday, she can let you know exactly what's allowed. And if you want to request a zoning amendment or something different, she'll give you the applications for it.
So is Gabberts going to end up parking their trucks there? Because that's kind of.
That's gross news to me when you said that.
That's gonna kind of, you know, it's gonna hurt my plans.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
We'll find out. But thank you for coming and letting us know.
Yeah.
Take it. Bayola Williams. But no luck.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel.
Good evening.
Residents, I have an earth-shattering question. I am currently a commissioner on the zoning board of appeals. We have not had a meeting this year. We have not elected officers. I understand we have some new appointees to the board. And who are we exactly under? Because when I first got on the commission, planning development is who not ran our meetings, but notified us of our meetings, passed out whatever, or distributed information to us for whatever case we were getting ready to hear. So who are we falling up under now? Are we still under planning and development? We are.
Derek Daio, I think he's over to ZBA. You will be having a meeting coming up, I'm in July. Shaday? I'm sorry, Shaday, who just stepped out in the hall, is gonna be over to ZBA. Crutchfield.
Okay, she's director of special projects?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because like I understand.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So I did send the correspondences because, and I brought her up at the council meeting, because we needed clarity.
Uh, yeah.
We had appointed new members to the board, so we're ready to resign, because nothing had happened.
Oh.
Well, nothing had happened as far as facilitating getting a meeting up to go. After Shaday and Derek went back to their offices, they decided who it will fall under, which is Ms. Crutchfield. And so, excuse me, they were supposed to be getting together soon to get you all an agenda, so you can have an organizational meeting and all that, to elect your officers and get ready to move forward. Especially since we just had a planning commission meeting, and one of those items has to come before the ZBA for variance. And so, yeah, but let's touch base with Ms. Crutchfield after, she just stepped out with the one resident that just spoke, so.
Okay, well, another earth-shattering question, why would that come under special projects as opposed to community development?
They're both, Shaday and Derek are both city planners.
So, okay.
They're splitting their responsibilities in that whole department.
Okay, okay. Alright, that was just a little confusing, like, why would special projects have anything to do with the ZBA as opposed to community development? Okay, thank you.
Okay. They'll be having a meeting soon. Yeah, they have to, okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilman and residents of Inkster. I've lived here in Inkster all of my life, okay, and the street that I live on, believe it or not, I was born on that street. So I've been there for a long time. And the house that I live in, my grandparents built it. So when I got married, my husband and I took it over, but he's passed away. But my complaint is, I have some neighbors that I have complained about. At 3346 Irene for a while. Last month, I made a complaint about the yard. I left home, I came back, I was shocked. They cut the grass, they cut back some bushes, because I couldn't even park my car in the driveway because of a tree that was a bush, but turned into a tree. They had cut the stuff down, you know, and it was looking nice. And I was happy, and they were sweeping, you know, and I happened to go in the backyard the other day with a man from, from the cable to look at my dish, because I'm having a problem with it. And that's when I noticed they had cleaned up the backyard a little bit. It still needs a whole lot of cleaning. But there was the turkey back there and a chicken, okay? Okay, so I'm telling you now, these are some foreigners that live next door to me, and they don't speak English really. So, okay, when I called and made my complaint, I figured somebody must have did something to make them clean it up. Well, I was smiling, and I looked around, and they had a flatbed trailer in the front yard. Today, they have a couch, that's a bed couch in the front yard. I took a picture of it before I left. And on the side of the house, today I counted, they've got nine cars on the side of the house. Some of them are intact, some of them are not. But it looks like a junkyard over there. And I mean, I spend money to try to keep my yard and my property looking decent. I know that this is a renter's property. The tree that's in the way of my cable, of my dish, I had someone to come out and look at, they said it need to be cut down. I don't know who owns the house. But I can't watch television, because it just, when the wind blow, my television just cuts up. And it's, it's a hot mess next door. I mean, like I said, I keep my yard up, it costs me, because I can't do it myself. I used to could do it, but I can't, so I have to pay to have my yard kept up. I pay my taxes, and I don't feel like that people from other countries should be able to come over here and live any kind of way. They park going the wrong way down the street. They park going the wrong way down the street. They park the car and they have a car every night parked in the front yard. So this is my complaint, that is it anything you guys can do about them cleaning up their property and realizing that they're not in their country anymore. They're in our country. And that they just can't, you know, live any kind of way.
Ms. Jackson, I'm introducing Terrence Worthington. He's a code enforcement officer. Get with him before you leave here tonight and he'll go check it out.
All right. Thank you then.
Mr. Mayor, with the tree part of her satellite dish, just because I used, I used to install them. If it is a tree that's not city on and that's on the neighbors, it's not, we can really do to force them to trim it. But because of that, I will help in any way, shape or form I can because it leaves you as a customer in a buy when they say you can't touch your neighbor's tree and it's knocking your service. It needs to, I don't have anything else to go to. So I'll help Mr. Worthington or Mr. Bibbison in whatever shape. We got to do it just to help you with that.
Okay, because I came to the town meeting and I, I understand that you guys said have patience. I tried with these people. But like I said, they don't speak English. And last year, when they were cutting the limbs back, uh, D T E was out. One of the limbs was hanging over on my side, so they did cut that for me. But some of the limbs now are on my side, but this tree, it didn't always be a tree.
If they're on your property line, you can trim it.
Yeah.
Anything hanging over your property?
I know anything on my property line I can trim, but even if I trimmed it, it's not going.
Like well?
No.
Yeah, you would literally have, they would literally have to be in their yard cutting, hacking it because you need so many degrees around a satellite dish for your service to be strong. And then like you said, when the wind blows, it's like waving.
And I'm sitting there in the television just cracking up and I'm, I'm getting disgusted. I'm getting frustrated. You know, but okay, I thank you. I thank you.
Thank you. Lawanna Abney Mitchell.
Good evening. Well, I'm up here for a couple of reasons. First, I'm up here as trustee of Wayne Westland School District. So I just want to thank the mayor and council for honoring our Inxter students. They was really proud, um, even though we had um, maybe sixteen that didn't show up. So over the last three days, I went to their house and delivered their certificates and their pens. And they was just happy to have them. And I thank you guys for that. And also over the last three days, four days, five days, we have had honors um, programs and we have had graduations. So first I want to talk about um, our Wayne Westland Innovative Academy. So that is in person and online for eighteen year olds that they can continue to get their high school diploma online. And we also have twenty-three A. So if they over twenty-three, they can qualify for this program also. It's a free education to get your high school diploma. At that graduation, we had ninety-six people graduating. So I was very happy for that. At Wayne Memorial graduation, we had over two hundred um, graduates. But what was impressive, impressive about the Wayne, uh, Wayne Memorial date, the students at Wayne Memorial, they received more than twelve point five million dollars in scholarships. At John Glenn, we also had over two hundred graduates and which received three million dollars, over three million dollars in scholarships. So that's just, it ain't happening to see our kids, to see our Inxter students out taking pictures afterwards with the checks and everything. And also the only, and about the schools, I was sitting, thinking about our students that play instrument medicine, that's in um, drama classes, that's our students that rap, you know, as we are having our events over the summer, our birthday parties and stuff like that. Let's think about our students and hire them. Even if we have a prayer breakfast, we can hire a student that play an instrument to um, say to, to play the, the Lord's Prayer. We can ha- hire a student that rap at one of our birthday parties, rap the birthday songs. So as we thinking about entertainment for our own parties and everything, think about our youth and the talents that they have. We can even get them to, you know, make a flyer or something. You know, just on that graduation end, because all of them is not going away to college. So we need to steal, instill things in the ones that sitting at home on their porch. Because that's where the gun, now this is what I'm here to talk about, the gun violence. If we don't give our kids activities and things to do, we have incidents of gun violence. They hanging out with their friends, trying to figure out something. They getting mad. They don't have no conflict resolution and they going straight to a gun. Um, Michigan has created new gun laws um, through um, in gun violence. Michigan, I have became a certified trainer to train um, people on the new four gun laws. It's only about fifteen minute training. And I've taken a responsibility to train our Inxter residents. Our Inx- so if you having an event or you having a presentation this summer, please give me a call and let me spend fifteen minutes talking about the gun laws. Because the gun laws has changed, our responsibilities has changed. And right here in Michigan, we have had the first two parents that ever been prosecuted because they purchased a gun and did not get mental health services for their son from the Osprey school shooting. And we also have another father whose eleven year old child um, got a hold to his gun in Detroit and shot him and he's going to, and he's going to prison because he just didn't want to have a trial. So there's a lot of things to learn and everything. And um, the last thing I want to talk about is my walk for gun violence. This is the third year. I'm starting at the Ample Theater at eleven A M with a prayer and a pep rally. And then I'm walking down the east side of Michigan and back up the street. So um, I used a picture from last year with Councilman Chilton on there, so you can lead the walk this year.
I appreciate y'all making us run off work to do stuff like. In some places.
Orange ribbons. If anybody would like an orange ribbon to wear the whole month of June. Mayor, I gave you one and I gave one for your wife. To wear for the whole month of June to um, represent ending gun violence. I will be offering the march on the thirteenth for June. Um, so just think about that. Think about our young folks sitting at home. Think about utilizing their talents so they can have something to do and something to be proud of. Just because, you know, they take that band class for four years and that don't mean that they don't never have to pick up the instrument again. We can keep them moving, keep it moving because you know, kids don't go to church like they used to, so.
Thank you.
Kind of give them something to do. Thank you. I appreciate y'all.
All right. You too. Tanya Humphrey and Barbara Albert and Tangela Ward.
I don't know.
Oh, you done? Okay. Velma Overman. He don't look like Velma Holden.
Uh, Mayor and Council, Pastor Overman had to leave on an emergency and she asked me to make her announcement and and pretty shy about public speaking. We'll do our best.
Camp Inspire STEM Summer Camp is coming to us July the eighth through August the sixteenth. It's coming through the auspices of Operation Refuge. The children from ages seven to fourteen will be entertained from field trips, arts and crafts, sports and swimming, music and dance, and exploring nature and meeting new friends. There will be field engagement. They'll learn confidence and have mentoring uh, programs available for them and social skill development. They'll be exposed to science, technology, engineering, literacy, arts and math. This is something you do not want your child to miss. It's every day, Monday through Friday, from nine thirty A M to three thirty P M. This event will be something that will change the lives of all of the children involved. And there's even more. Those that have perfect attendance will receive two hundred and fifty dollars cash. So tell every parent, tell every friend, every neighbor that has a child. Tell every baby mama, every baby daddy that their child needs to be at STEM Summer Camp two thousand and twenty-four. For further information, contact Operation Refuge Pastor Velma Overman.
You'll never live that down. Chris Sanders.
First of all, I want to, I sat on my seat, I played good and bad. Well, the good part is, uh, I came in today surprised and shocked and actually excited that um, the city of Inxter probably has the best, most advocating city attorney ever in the state of Michigan, Mr. Todd Perkins. He is probably one of the best people I've ever met in my entire life. And he's going to do well, Mr. Perkins, for the city of Inxter. And you guys should be very proud to have him. Secondly, the not so good part, I went to the Memorial Day Parade. And I wanted to say thanks to the mayor, Mayor Proton, Councilman Bishop and Councilwoman uh, Redditch for attending. Whether we like what our country stands for sometimes or not, when we become elected officials, our time is not our own on public holidays. It's a disgrace and despicable that people that, that, that represent the city chose not to honor the dead, whether they marched in the parade or not is one thing. To honor the dead of the people who give us the rights that we have and we enjoy, not to be at, at least to service where they get a great um, presentation about the Tuskegee Airmen is a disgrace and despicable. And you all should be ashamed of yourself.
City clerk is sick today. That's why she's not here with us. City treasurer, it does not exist at this moment. Mayor and Council Communications. Councilwoman Rich.
Um, just a few things. First, uh, to the gentleman, no, I was not in attendance. I was with my family. My, my mic is on. I honor the dead. My brother died in Vietnam. And we have a special family gathering that we do in honor of my brother.
You represent the community?
It doesn't matter. My family's first, so we let that go. Um, number two, um, on Isabel, and I guess this would be code enforcement. There is a memorial on the street sign. And it has, well, I guess this is where the young man passed from the accident. But um, they do have riptides and some of everything hanging on the street sign. And the residents are quite upset about it. If the code enforcement could go up and remove it, I don't think we're allowed to have memorial things hanging on the street signs for public. Also, um, they did do some work on Isabel. Um, there is a large hole there that's been there for over a month. If you can fill that in, that will be greatly appreciated. And also I want to give thanks to Chief Jenkins. Um, I was at the event that you uh, talked about domestic violence. You did a very good job and I want people to um, take it seriously about domestic violence. It's not only physical violence, but it's stalking. It's financial, it's a mental, emotional abuse, et cetera, as she talked about it. There's also um, threats, insults, humiliation, embarrassment and intimidation. But I want to thank you for taking the time to address the group. You did a very good job and I was very proud that you were there. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Redditch.
No problems tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Scott. Come on, Scott.
Mayor, Mayor Proton. Thank you. Um, just real quick, I was looking for some of the residents that uh, just so you all know, a lot of times conversations get started on social media. And it's like we're chasing fires when we try to fact check them, if you will. And there's a multitude of Inxter groups out there that are not governed or ran by the city of Inxter. Unfortunately, some people see the word Inxter, they see that group and they take it as gospel. And then we have to try to counter it um, either publicly or one-on-one. We did this in twenty nineteen. And you know, we're back at the same conversations again, especially when I, I share them amongst, you know, some of my colleagues when it happened in their districts, just so they're not blindsided. Uh, I was looking for those particular residents tonight. I don't see them, but I just wanted everyone to, one, I encourage you to sign up for Code Red. Two, attend more than just the council meetings. Attend the planning commission meetings as well. Because a lot of the businesses and entities that come before us here at council, this is the final say so when we're getting ready to vote on them. When an opportunity was presented at the planning commission meeting, maybe months ahead of time, whether it was a public hearing, a special land use, site plan review, whatever the case may be. A lot of times we can throw a hundred bricks in that room and we won't hit anybody except Councilwoman Sandra Watley because she is there to be the voice of the community. And sometimes other business applicants who might really, I'm sorry, reside in the city of Inxter, they'll speak out or speak up as well. So you have two people speaking on the, the behalf of twenty-six thousand, if you will. And then once that business has been established, the signage goes up, then we want to, oh, that's my alarm, they're going to stop. Then we uh, you know, we want to undo what's been done. And that's just not how business works. That's not how government works. So I just encourage you all to sign up for Code Red. I'll be here after the meeting to sign up anybody who needs that assistance. Uh, two, attend planning commission meetings as your schedule permits and other meetings too, as you heard about the zoning board of appeals and so on and so forth. And of course, continue supporting by uh, participating in Inxter city council meetings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Um, just reminder, July first, we have a new garbage carrier priority. It's bought all the contracts for G F L, which has been our carrier for now, what, five, six years? Yeah, a couple of years. So um, there will be a change. We're hoping the transition goes smooth and we're not stuck with garbage sitting on the street. Uh, but I'm crossing my fingers. We've been in communication with them to make sure that this goes smooth. Reminder, the water bills are about to be placed on the property taxes. Please pay your past due water bills or they will be on the property taxes, summer property taxes. Of course, those tax bills are coming out very soon, so get excited. You'll see it. This is the big bill every year. So uh, they'll be going out in June. By July, by July first. Okay, okay. And the parade, I thought the parade went great. I had a good job. I want to thank Clint McDaniel, Denise Williams, um, and everybody who participated. I'm sorry, Denise Johnson. I'm tripping. Uh, Yvonne Moore. Yeah. Those, those three carried the, carried the load over the last couple of months organizing this parade. The weather broke for us. I just want to give you a tidbit of information. At seven thirty in the morning, Jerome Bibbison calls my house way too way early. He, he's looking out the windows, he's all the clouds. He's like, I think we should cancel it. I said, man, we not canceling this. The sun is coming out about ten o'clock. Eleven o'clock, the sun was out, the parade was great, everything was dry. He, he didn't want to work that day. So that's what that was about. But we, we survived. So looking forward to the summer. We got a lot of great events in June. I cannot wait. Um, and the kids get out with another week or two. So you know, we got out there and keep them busy this summer, y'all. Got to keep them busy. All right, and that's all I got. You had a motion? You got a second? You got a discussion?
No discussion.
All right, all those are favorite.
I thought it barely.
No, it's because the company, even though the company changed it, it's still dropped. Todd.